Meeting is called to order. It looks like we might break even our wonderful record of getting out.
That sounds good to me.
Right, I thought that it might. Okay, we'll begin as we usually do with public comment and we have potentially a member of the public. Do you wish to comment on something not on the agenda?
Well, I was here to talk about the fire station, but I understand that that will be on the 26th.
And it's on, it will be on the agenda, so it won't be in public comment period.
On the 26th, that won't happen either?
Well, we don't know, it's up to them.
Well, I think what she's referring to is tonight, because it's on the agenda, it's not part of the public comment period.
Right.
But at the, at the next meeting, we are anticipating seeing the application.
Right, so we'll welcome you back then.
Okay.
Okay.
They've requested a continuance.
No, she didn't speak. So, minutes, Paul.
I recommend approval of the minutes of June 28th, 2022.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes are approved, thank you Paul very much. They're good minutes, as always. Next, we have an A and R, doesn't appear to present any kind of a problem. Did everyone have a chance to take a look at it?
Wait a minute. Release the covenant.
Oh, the release of the covenant, sorry.
It's okay.
Right. This also presents no problem at all, this is a cleanup. We apparently, a planning board some time ago approved this, but it did not make it to be recorded properly. So this is to be sure that it's approved and then gets recorded properly. Who does the recording, Jim?
The applicant.
The applicant.
Yes.
Okay, so let us now do that.
Well, it should be noted also that Attorney Lev Hertz wrote this up and met the approval of the staff.
Correct.
Because we usually have a different kind of acceptance. Don't worry about it.
Right. You mean, anything that deviates from past practice, we have to notify? We bring that to attention?
That might be a good thing.
It is a good thing. Alright, so, could we have a motion?
I will move that we accept the release for covenant on Old Campus Drive, DTB, Inc.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's approved. Now, A and R, the applicant is Richard LaRue, that's probably mispronounced, plan of a land swap, to swap Epo land areas located at 10 Bahia Lane and 33 Old Meeting House Road. This was a corner lot that led one house at an angle, so they needed to correct the lot lines, change the lot lines, so that they're both in, more closely in conformance. Anybody here for them to speak on this? There's no particular need for it. We've all had a chance to look at the map. Anyone want to discuss it? Paul?
Note needs correction, that's all.
Okay.
Note says 1B on the third line. Should be 1B.
Did we hear that?
Yep, it's actually note number one where it says lots 1B and 10A are not considered buildable lots. I believe what they mean to say is lots 1B and 10B are not considered buildable lots.
Right. So they're in conformance. Alright, with, with that change, can we have a, a motion to endorse?
I move to endorse.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion now? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And gathering that that motion to endorse also includes, without regard to the building?
Yes.
Yes.
Very good, thank you.
I should have said that, sorry.
That would be an interesting house.
Why'd you say that?
If they built them one of those lots.
Oh, it would.
It was a joke.
Straight up, right. Okay, then we have two who are not appearing. The first of that was for a planning board decision. The applicant, Neto Politi, is requested a continuance for a special permit for parking within five feet of the front property line located 799, 797 Main Street.
We have a letter from the attorney.
We do have a letter from the attorney, and...
So should I read it into the record?
Yeah.
Okay. In regard to 797 Main Street, we have a letter from Princie Mills Law, PC, from Robert Mills, who is the attorney for the applicant. Dear Mr. Cornock, the applicant hereby requests that the above referenced matter be rescheduled from July 12th, 2022 until July 26th, 2022. The applicant's consulting engineer is working through changes/revisions to the plan. I anticipate a plan will be timely filed within the next week.
Thank you. So, if we could have a motion to continue, we had that and a second, and now we're ready to vote. All in favor of the continuance to July 26th?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Paul?
Have they been in to discuss this with you?
Many times.
Are you?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Next, was to continue, well, the applicant has requested a continuance also to the 26th. The applicant is Boulder Engineering. On behalf of the town of Falmouth, site plan review to construct new fire station located at 878 Sandwich Road. They apparently have not completed the things that we discussed at our last meeting, so they're hoping to be here at our next meeting. Is there any discussion on this? Jed, do you have any further information you want to share?
No, other than they just haven't gotten to all of the comments and they plan to appear before you at the 26th, that's, that's all they have.
Right, I'm curious, oh.
No, I was just going to move that we accept their request.
Good, but we'll wait a sec. I'm wondering, Jed, if you've heard from anyone around town about the fire station, person's here who will be here at the next meeting, but it seemed to have been so thoroughly processed before it got here.
Yeah, I, I haven't heard anything directly, but my understanding is that they have the building committee that they've worked through the process before they even appearing here, so they've turned over every rock, if you will.
Seems like, okay, now Pat.
Okay, I move that we accept Boulder Engineering's request for a continuance to July 26th of this site plan review, same time, same place.
Jed, pause seconds. Any discussion at this time? No, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we'll hear more about this on the 26th, perhaps, if they're finished doing that. Now we have some discussion items, and the first discussion item that we have, well, first we'll hear committee reports, then we'll do our discussion items. Any committee reports, Paul? You usually have a report.
I think I reported last time, but the Transportation Committee made a final report to the Select Board 10 days or so ago, and it was recommended that the Select Board pause the actions of the committee until the three missing members of the committee are appointed.
Uh huh.
And I've never, have not heard anything further since then.
Are they just going to sort of let it calm down a while before they appoint people?
I have no idea. The newspaper article showing the appointment, the appointments available did not mention Transportation Committee, so I don't know when they're going to advertise for that.
We'll see. Any other committee reports? No? Okay.
Yeah, I'll just mention one, there was a very interesting discussion yesterday at the Water Quality Management Committee, where they're talking about having a visit to Yarmouth, where they're doing, dealing with a lot of similar issues, and they're very heavily involved in the permeable reactive area for two areas downtown. So it was a very detailed presentation here, and it was very interesting. I think they're going to go out and visit and see what's, if there's anything available that would be applied here in Falmouth. So they're making good progress.
Is that a very expensive solution?
Keep it in source.
It's a hundred million dollars.
Oh.
There's only less than 20 people, 20,000 people year round. Not year round, seasonal. So the resident population's about 9,000, so it's, it is expensive. But they're looking at various grants and things like that to cover it, and increase in, in motel tax, as well as some betterments.
Well, in that town, like others, we'll get the federal money that's about to be distributed.
Yeah.
Although it's been on the verge of distribution for quite a while. Other reports, now, the zoning bylaw recertification. This is, of course, an embarrassment to this planning board, that's the way I feel it, but the, our report is that we still do not have clarity from the state. Is that correct, Jed?
Nothing formal yet, however, we are anticipating a disapproval.
What, how did we get to that stage? That seems more a step forward from where we were a few days ago.
So, part of the reason is because, as you know, being the summer, the planning board would typically start thinking about advertising public hearings for any zoning amendments. You'd start that process in September. So part of that is to make sure that we know where we're at, so that we can inform the public exactly what the story is, and then also bring forward this new document for the public, for the planning board to hold public hearings, and then ideally get to the town meeting in the fall. And so, we've worked closely with town council to make sure that we understand the situation, understand the implications, and we're seeking that determination, town council's seeking that determination from the Attorney General, so that we can just start, start fresh, and bring it back to this board, back to the working group, to make sure that everyone understands, and then move forward with the public hearings, make our way to town meeting.
And at this point, the whole board has received what we received from the AG's office, is that correct?
That is not correct, because we were waiting for that formal designation, and that's the document that we're sharing.
I, yeah, I have a problem with that, and I know other members of the board do, but, but so do members of the public, and I think that, I don't know why we're withholding it.
It's, it's only that we want to make sure it's formal from the Attorney General, so that we can share it with the general public in the board.
Well, we're all grownups, we can, we can distinguish stages.
More than that, it's public information, and I've been asking for this, I was very nicely given 10 pages of the things that were wrong, but not the cover letter or anything explaining where they came from.
There isn't one.
It didn't show up by itself.
It did.
No, no from who was from, no nothing, just, it can't be totally by itself.
You're going to have to believe it, because that's what happened.
Right, and that's, and that's...
Who was it from?
It is from the Attorney General's office, what we're asking.
So, did they say enclosed, please find 15 pages, 10 pages of problems?
That is not what I received, no.
Anyways, I would like to see the transmittal, because it's really, really hard for me to explain to people what's going on, and, you know, I'm in the middle of this in my business. And the other thing I want to point out, I'm aware that the ZBA has more than 12 special permits, where they have specifically referred to the new bylaw. When you file out a special permit, you're required to put what bylaw is, when it was passed and everything, and they've got 12 of them, they're referencing the bylaw we're just about to take down and say, no good.
It's true that this has caused not only confusion, but it's going to cause extra work for this board, and for the ZBA, and for the lawyers who are working with them, but this is the situation that we're in.
Okay, I just, I just...
And Jim, don't say again, you want something that nobody in town has. Because they sent it electronically, these 10 pages, they were downloaded, and what it says is, as you, because you have read it...
Wasn't even enclosed, please find?
No, no enclosed, please find. You have everything that anyone else in town received, and all it labels is new and old. It doesn't say good new ones or bad new ones, just new and old. And what there's, what their issue appears to be from phone conversations is that the town meeting may not have comprehended it fully. I'm sure they're right, because full comprehension is practically a human impossibility, so you can't really deal with that.
Okay, it's probably a moot point, if we're going to all agree that the bylaws going away, then it's moot point, I should stop back arguing about it.
That would be nice.
But we are, but we are seeking that cover letter with those, those 10 pages, so that that formal document, when we receive it, is what you'll receive, and then the public will receive it. Everyone will receive that, so that it's formalized, everyone's clear on the path forward, so that we're not sending out, you know, all this information that they don't have.
Jed, I don't know what authority the board has to direct the planning department to provide it to someone who asks. And what I have in mind here is Bob Amen, who has emailed me, asking for it, I know he emailed you, because you were CC'd on it, so you've seen it.
Yep.
And I'm sure that he is speaking for others and has spoken with others. So I believe that if we have it, the whole board, if I have it, the whole board should have it.
Yes.
And I have given it to Jim, because he was so concerned about it, but I, I would like us all to have it electronically, would be very nice, and for you, if you could, to please respond positively to requests for it. It's not hidden information.
It's not.
And the more it's hidden, the more damning it becomes, because you read it and you realize, hey, I don't even see why they had such a fuss over this, is the reaction. But it could be, we don't understand every little word in it, but it should be out there. Paul?
Yeah, if, if what Jim has just said, that the ZBA has at least 12 projects where we're referring to new bylaw, we should maybe officially notify them that there is a risk that it's going to be turned down. I mean, they should know that officially.
Yeah, we've already done that. And actually, the ZBA refers to both bylaws, they have since the, since town meeting approved it. So what they do in their language is, you know, this applicant is applying under this new section, which was formally known as Section 240, 68 point whatever it may be. So they've tried to keep those two things together in all of their applications. So it, it's understandable, and we anticipate receiving that formal documentation very soon, and all of that will be shared as soon as we receive that.
I'd just like everyone who is really involved in it, either for business purposes or from the standpoint of the town...
Certainly.
...to be on the same foot as far as knowing what's in it. I just think it would be a better situation.
Absolutely.
There's no reason to hide it, and I think really what's happened is we have a brand new town lawyer, who is, this may be unfair, who is understandably cautious, lawyers tend to be, and so we've been trying to, you know, respect that, but this is taking too long, and we really ought to get it out. So you will be sending it?
Sure.
Thank you. Paul?
Looking down the road a bit, if this is going to come up in the November town meeting, and one of the concerns that the state has is that the town meeting members didn't understand it, I'm not sure what steps we can take to help them understand it.
That will be a nice time.
Because it's a very complex document, there's a lot of major changes, not zoning changes, but organization changes.
Right.
But I don't know if they don't understand, how are you going to make them understand it? How can you address that issue?
Well, I, through public hearings, and I believe as long as we're presented the opportunity, and presented the information as we receive it, we've done the most that we can do.
We'll have to do it toward the end of the summer, because...
Unless someone has a suggestion.
We've got a deadline for the...
Yep.
And with guidance from the Attorney General's office.
Yeah.
So we want to make sure that we do it right, so that when it goes back to them, whenever that may be, let's call it December, that everything comes in the form in which they're looking for, so that we don't have this issue again.
Right.
So, town council's working very closely with them to make sure that we've got the right language on all the public hearings, that we explain it in the right way, so that there isn't confusion.
And is it true that we're not meeting with our consultants until the 29th of this month?
I don't think we have a meeting scheduled per se, because we are trying to work out logistics around getting it ready, and, you know, without jumping to the draft timeline, but to go over the draft timeline of when you want to open public hearings, so that we can try and schedule a working group meeting, so that the working group fully understands the changes that were made, we can go through them one by one, we can make any sort of last minute adjustments if we need to, and then we can bring it back to the board to open up for the public hearings, so that the board is comfortable with the working group's finalization of the document.
Okay. Pat?
I have expressed this to Jed, and I want to express it to the whole board, that my concern is that it be done absolutely right this time, that the first time, I think it was hurried, and that's one of the reasons that omissions were in there, that it wasn't properly proofread in many cases, and I think from my point of view, it is more critical that we get it absolutely right this time than say, well, we're going to have it for November town meeting. I hope we can.
I think it should be later.
You think what?
I think it should be next spring.
Yeah, you and I are on the same page, aren't we, Bob? On that, didn't know it until right now, but...
Jim?
Well, first, let me say, hindsight's 2020. It's really easy to go back and say, okay, look at all the mistakes we made. I thought everything was perfect, and it wasn't. But, because of the hindsight, and I've now heard it described to me, that the new interpretation is because if it isn't specifically mentioned in the bylaw, therefore it's excluded, so past practices of 20 or 30 years are totally wiped out by a chart that you put a yes or a no into, which it, basically, you folks were saying, well, multifamily isn't allowed anywhere, except in, in business redevelopment, because we spelled it out in business redevelopment. But we probably should have said it's okay in other areas too, but we didn't. We've made tons of mistakes over the years, and this, all this article did is point out how bad all our mistakes were, and we got a lot of work to do on it. And I, I myself, I'm going to concentrate on the multifamily issues and all the business things, and I would suggest that another group of, of outside people take, I've heard that the pre-existing non-conforming has a lot of issues there too, so they're almost, it can't be, it has to be studied probably in four or five chunks, and, and looked at to really, to really get it right. But I, I, I think there's a lot of, like I said, I didn't notice them before, but afterwards, hindsight, you see it, you go, oh my God, look what we did. So, it's going to, it's going to be a lot of work.
John, did you want to comment?
No.
Uh huh.
I think it is also fair...
He's got some pre-existing non-conforming buildings.
I think it's also...
Residential units there.
Also fair to say that when you take on such a monumental task as this, that over the years, you will find additional errors, even though we thought we had caught everything.
Absolutely.
It was, what, a 240-page document, our chapter 240, and it had grown over the years, things, it was redundant in some areas, vacant in others, and our first recertification vote taken last November was supposed to do three things. It was supposed to reorganize it in a format that would be more user-friendly, so that you could look things up and not have to pour over the document to find what you needed. So the first thing we approved as a board was, if we were accountants, it would have been the chart of accounts, we approved a table of contents. Yes, this makes sense as an organization for all these bylaws. That was a very important step that we took at that time, and we requested as much information as possible to be presented graphically in matrices, so that we could look things up and compare them to one another, and could spot these strange anomalies more easily. So, we were going to reorganize it, and we were going to end the, reformat some of it. We were going to clarify some things, and we were going to update it to state law, so that where our bylaw was silent, but state law said something important, we would make mention of it. Those were the things we were supposed to do, and for this, you can see I'm annoyed by this whole thing, for this, we hired consultants, and I, I really respect them. They are knowledgeable, they are nice, they put up with a long process, because we wanted to have a lot of people involved in it, and yet, they were our experts. So that a lot of, at least my sense, that this is really in great shape, came from that belief. So I'm anxious to meet with them, actually, and hear what they have to say about that thought, because we'll be relying on them for our next steps also. And I don't disagree with you, Jim, I think that having, the people who were involved for, what, five years, Pat?
Yeah.
Okay, beginning with that first index, were planning board members who, who were appointed to it and attended faithfully, zoning board members who attended slightly less faithfully, I would say, but still turned up most of the time, the zoning board administrator, who was a very, very great help on it, the town planners, the building commissioner chose not to participate very often, which was too bad, because so much of the work goes through that office, and our two consultants. So we really had people who knew what they were doing and were looking at it over a long period of time. Nevertheless, here we are. I believe, no matter how careful we are going forward, there will still be Scrivener's errors, because those were some of them. It had to have been, it to say that town meeting didn't comprehend points to the process rather than what was on paper, and they haven't clarified that, and they didn't send a cover letter. So this is what we're waiting for.
And the nuances, you know, the, our bylaw, multifamily is a newer word that we only put in when we did the re, the redevelopment, but multiple use has been in the bylaw forever, and it just, we, the change in wording and language and interpretation, and when you get a consultant that comes in, they read it black and white to what they're used to, but we're all used to 50 years of, of the old language. It turned out to be much more difficult than I ever imagined.
Well, I think that we're, probably this process we're going to undertake starting very soon is going to involve all of us.
Yeah.
Not just two of us, but all of us, really looking at it.
For instance, I, I seriously think we're going to have to have a discussion whether we really think multifamily is allowed.
Mixed use, mixed use.
Mixed use.
Mixed use.
Mixed use, we say.
Mixed use, right, mixed use is what I said, right, which, mixed use is the multifamily component.
Yep.
With the others, right, I was being too specific, mixed use.
Yep.
Right, you have to really watch your words.
I know, I know.
Too many Ms.
Same, same problem, and that is going to be some work.
It's going to be a lot of work. And the other thing it means is it, it really bollocks us up, phase two of the recertification, where we're going to actually attempt to make changes that over time have become evident would be good for the town. So we'll have to put that on hold while we do phase one correctly.
We're actually probably going to have to do both at the same time in some areas, because it is so complicated that we have to spell out what the, what the new understanding of mixed use is, and, and the old, and now that we say this, we, that means it has to be put back into all the other. When that's a substantial change that we never said we're going to.
It doesn't mean that, we're not putting anything back in that isn't there already on phase one.
But we already have.
But we didn't mean to take it out.
We don't know that we did. I think it's not time to get into the weeds.
Right, yeah.
That's the whole issue, right there, that's exactly what I'm getting at.
For you, for you, but there are other issues, because you looked at the 10 pages, and you could see section by section, the state has pulled out a little something in each area, almost every area. So...
So, it's a ton of work, and we better get going on it.
Yeah, and, right, and although, you know, the planning board was good at turning up, so I, I hope that we will be going forward. Anyone want to say more about the recertification? It's a good time to vent. Okay. Davis Straits Form Based Code. This is really, we're not really going to discuss it tonight, that's not our purpose. The purpose was to be sure that you have what the subcommittee on this, the board's subcommittee, has and has been working with, with Horstley Witten on, so that you could begin to absorb it. It's a big document, it, Jim and Pat have been our representatives on that, they let me listen in, which was really nice to do, thank you very much, but we will soon be having to take it up ourselves. So is there anything, Pat or Jimmy, want to say about it at this time?
Can I?
Yeah.
I really want the board to fine tooth this, because we've been talking about it for quite a while, the whole Davis Straits, and working on it through many iterations with the Cape Cod Commission. And so this incorporates a lot from those prior studies, we've been heading in this direction, goodness knows how many years already, with the commission studies, and so I, the purpose is of this, that this is a, a small group that worked on this and made it happen, and now we need your input on it before we get it out to the town, because you may have other changes. We've done the best we could do to try to incorporate everything we've talked about here over the years. That doesn't mean everything is in here that you might like to see in here, or you might like to see some things changed, so it really is going to take a bit of study on your part to get it to where we really want it to be, or maybe you're just going to love it and put your blessing on it, I don't know.
Any first reactions? We've had it since, what, Thursday or Friday?
Mm-hmm.
So you might have had time to at least look through it and get some sort of a reaction? No?
Yeah.
Oh. That's disappointing. Oh. That's disappointing. Okay. And we... when do you think we'll get to... it is a big discussion item, the 26th?
Yeah, we could put it on the agenda for the 26th if you'd like.
Jim and Pat?
Yeah, I think it's ready to get into. Yeah.
Pat won't be here.
First meeting in August is the 9th.
Put it off. Let's wait till we get everybody here. It's not going to be easy.
Right.
Well, in two weeks doesn't give you a whole lot of time to really absorb this either, I think. And think about it in a holistic sense, what we're trying to accomplish.
Well, I wonder if we could do this because it's really, I think, easier for people to do that if they've had a walkthrough with someone who's been part of the process. So, I wonder, and we don't need you for a walkthrough. It's just a walkthrough. If we could do that. And Jim, you could be the commenter and Jed, you could do the walkthrough.
Okay.
Yep, and I would think it would be a good thing for someone else to automatically take devil's advocate and challenge it as we go down the road on everything and say, what about this or what about that? Even if they don't think that way. But that's the attitude that I think we should take so we don't... so we're more thorough.
And that's what we did do with Horsley Witten and the consulting group to the other union studio.
But I think that's a good approach.
Well, this would be more just a, what's in here?
What's in here? Okay.
What's in here? Let's just, you know, know that we all heard it, that that's what's in here. And then, the next time we're looking at it, it will be the beginning of what's missing, what should be different. How will this work? Where doesn't it work? So, maybe a walkthrough on the 26th?
Sure.
Is that okay with everyone?
That's fine.
Okay, good. All right, do we have any announcements?
I have just one. The Assistant Town Planner interviews went really well. We have offered the position to our top candidate. They have tentatively accepted, although formal process has to happen, formal signing of documents. And we're excited to release that information very soon. So, we will soon be at fullish staff levels.
Are you at liberty to tell us anything about he or she?
I would like to hold back that information until we have final documents, formal documents signed, and that person could be at the next meeting when we introduce said person.
Thank you for your confidence.
But it moved...
I want it to be a surprise.
How many of us will be surprised at this point? Right. Glad to hear it.
Actually, very good news.
It's excellent news.
Congratulations on your effort.
We're very excited.
Yeah, very good. Okay, correspondence.